And welcome to the East Hampton School Committee meeting. This meeting this evening is being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. And the school committee would like to recognize and thank the following volunteer, Tim, for taping us tonight. And of course, for those of you who are at home, this is a hot issue on TV. We know that it gets a lot of hits, so you will want to keep it on your save list. That was the attempt at a little humor this morning, this evening. If any of you are interested in helping public access cable stations, channels five, nineteen, and twenty, I can give you a number. You are to call Kathy at (413) 203-1360. And they're always happy to welcome volunteers. So at this point, let's see if we have any announcements.
I do.
Let's see, am I going to let you announce first?
Yes, you go first.
Okay. The next school committee meetings are May 28th and June 18th, 2013. White Brook Middle School Spring Concert is Thursday, May 23rd. There's a half day of school on Friday, May 24th, due to Teacher Professional Development Day. There is no school Monday, May 27th, due to Memorial Day. Center Pepin All-School Show is at 9:30 a.m. on May 29th and 30th. White Brook Middle School Washington, D.C. trip is Wednesday through Friday, May 29th through 31st. Center Pepin Fourth Grade Visit to White Brook Middle School is May 31st. Senior Banquet and Harbor Cruise is Friday, May 31st. Center Pepin Book Fair is June 3rd through 6th. Senior Outing is Monday, June 3rd, at High Meadows in Granby, Connecticut. White Brook Middle School Enrichment Night is Monday, June 3rd. Senior Class Night is Wednesday, June 5th. Elementary Ice Cream Social, Art Show, and Book Fair is June 6th. 2013 Graduation is Friday, June 7th, at 7:00 p.m. White Brook Middle School Awards Night is Wednesday, June 12th. Center Pepin Field Day is June 21st. White Brook Middle School Eighth Grade Continuation is scheduled for the last day of school. And the last day of school is Wednesday, June 26th, which is a half day for students.
All right. Thank you Superintendent Folesby. I also have one announcement. Several weeks ago, I'm not exactly, I'm not remembering the exact date, but there was a special meeting held called Joint Convention, which was a meeting of the City Council and the school committee. And the purpose of that meeting was to hear candidates who were applying for the open position that was vacant on the school committee. There were six candidates that were heard that evening. And then the joint committee voted on the candidate that they would like to see receive the position. Perhaps all of you know by this point in time that Laura Scott is our new member of the school committee. But it appears that at that joint convention, we did not take an open vote. And the open meeting law requires that all votes are taken publicly, presented publicly. So this, I think at the last city council meeting, those members of the city council that were present at the joint convention announced who they had voted for that evening. And tonight, the members of the school committee who were able to be present at that joint convention will announce their candidates, who they voted for that evening.
Lois Levin.
I was not present.
Laura Scott. Laura Scott. And our two members that are not here this evening have sent their open vote. Mayor Mike announces that he voted for Wendy Blumenthal. And Peter Gunn, who was not able to be here tonight, announces that he voted for Laura Scott. So I think that fulfills our requirement. Thank you. Correspondents?
Correspondents, we received several letters from concerned teachers and parents regarding a proposed new model of providing social, emotional, and behavioral services. And tonight Superintendent Folesby and Ann Knapp are giving a presentation tonight to address those issues. We also received notification of a scholarship opportunity from MASC. We received notification from the City Clerk's Office regarding deadlines and signature requirements for elected positions. All of our positions and the mayor's positions, city councilor's positions are all open, free election this year. And nomination papers can be taken out beginning July 1st for anybody who would like to run for any of those positions. And we received letters from high school community members expressing their wishes to have the high school library named after Charles and Dorothea Rocky. And these letters will be taken under consideration by the naming subcommittee of the school committee. And we received wonderful news that Taylor Gattman, a senior at East Hampton High School, was accepted to Harvard, excuse me, Harvard University Secondary School Program this summer, where she'll be taking a world history course for college credit. So congratulations, Taylor.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any gifts?
Yes, we do.
Yes. Please vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. $50 from Taylor Agency for EHS Mr. East Hampton. $250 from David Boyle for EHS We the People. And the following for supporting the White Brook Middle School Dine Out East Hampton Fundraising Event, which raised a total of $1,540. Papa George Pizza, Tavern on the Hill, Glory of India, East Hampton Village Pizza, East Hampton Diner, Apollo Grill, Riff's Joint.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. At this time on our agenda, we have allotted a public speak time. That is a public speak time for issues that are not on the agenda. If you are here to speak on an issue that is, that you know to be on the agenda tonight, this is not your chance. That will come later. But are there any of you that would like to speak on an issue that is not included on our agenda this evening? Yes ma'am, would you come to the podium and give us your name and tell me what issue you are wishing to speak on?
My name is Margaret Potts. I'm a teacher at Maple. And I just wish to ask that it's possible, I wasn't here for the vote of the agenda. I don't know if you've actually taken the vote on the set agenda yet. But I know that many people are here to speak to the issue of the school adjustment counselor. And I know that there's some children in the room. And I was wondering if there could be an agenda change, because when I looked online, it looked like it was at the very end of the agenda. And if it was possible to do a switch and address those issues at the beginning of the meeting.
I can do that at the beginning of my superintendent's report. Thank you. Thank you very much. Nancy, did you wish to, what did you just say?
I was, I just said that we can do that at the beginning of my report, but we do need to allow John Roper, who's come to us from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to do his presentation to us on the district review, because he was allotted this time and was planning on this. So I think we have a few other reports before, no, we don't. We're ready for John.
Well, yes, we are. We're ready for Mr. Roper. But thank you for that suggestion.
Okay. Mr. Roper, would you like to come forward? And I think we've got you ready to go.
Thank you very much. And I promise I'll be brief. Really will. Madam Chair, ladies of the school committee, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for inviting me to join you this evening. I'm going to tell you a little bit about our district review process and what the district review team will be looking at when they come to visit you 10th of June, I believe it is. So we'll miss the seniors, however, but I did notice.
We can bring them back.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I love school.
Okay. The district review, it's supposed to be a helpful, helpful experience. Excuse me. It's an analysis of what's going on. It's a third party, an external analysis of what's going on. It's not intended to replace the kinds of things that you folks do every day. It's not that kind of a review. But it is the kind of thing that we hope to be able to provide you with an alternative look at what's happening. How your efforts towards improving education here for the kids is being seen by an outsider, a disinterested third party. We hope to be able to offer you some recommendations. The best part about our recommendations is that you are free to ignore them if you choose, because they are just that. They are just recommendations based on things that we find during our review. The way we basically will organize our time is to use something that we call district standards. They're part of the district system of support. So it's not simply an accountability visit. It's the first part of a district support visit. So we're going to look at six standards. The first standard is leadership and governance. The second one is curriculum and instruction. The third one is assessment, both student assessment and program assessments. We will look at human resources and professional development. We'll look at student support. And we'll look at finance and asset management. We will look at all of those things in the context of what we call the conditions for school effectiveness. We'll kind of use those standards as organizational areas around which we'll ask questions for folks in the district. We hope to be able to learn a lot about what you folks do every day. Please feel free, if you'd like to, if you have questions at any point, just give me a yell, and I'll be happy to go along with what you need to have. The components of this review start with independent, experienced, expert reviewers. The folks that we have working for us work in accountability. They are generally speaking, people who have completed distinguished services in schools across Massachusetts, mostly, although we have some other states represented as well. There are people who do this accountability work, not only here in Massachusetts, but in other states, and in some cases, other countries as well. There are people who have been trained, mostly by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the people who do this repeatedly for us. It's a fair and transparent process, at least we hope it is, because we spend a lot of time making sure that the district has all of the same information that we use to train district review members. You have a copy of our protocol. It's posted online on the department's website. We use the same protocol to train our people and to make these kinds of presentations to districts. It's data-driven, and it's evidence-driven. And it's an iterative process, which means, and I usually apologize for this before we start, we ask the same questions to different people so that we get information that we are fairly sure is accurate. One person, two people even, can have inaccurate information, just not know the answer. But if you've heard it from several people, the odds are very good that your information is at least as accurate as it can possibly be. We hope that the findings will be informative to you, and we hope that the recommendations will be helpful. Without informative findings and helpful recommendations, the whole process doesn't seem to hold much water. So we're going to try to make this as useful to you folks as we possibly can. There are a number of parts to this process. Kind of go over each one of them briefly, just to kind of give you an idea of where everything happens. The first part is the data and document analysis. And that generally happens two days the week before the district review. We bring all of the team members in to Malden. We go through all of the documents that we've asked the district to provide, and all of the documents that the district routinely provides to the department every year. Superintendent Folesby and the staff will attest to the fact that the department routinely asks for lots and lots of information. We apologize for that, but the public gets to know all of these things. So what we will try to do is make use of the stuff that you have already sent us so that we're not bothering you to do it again. And we want the folks on the teams to be able to have a good idea of how things work here in East Hampton before they actually come on site. We would like them to have informed questions. We would like them to know, at least in general, what to ask about when they come. The six standards and the 24 indicators and the district standards and indicators will serve as buckets of information for us to collect our information in. The team looks at data analysis. We will share with you the packet of data that the team looks at. The team will look at all different kinds of documents that have been submitted. And we promise that if you want to send us anything else that we haven't asked for, we will look at that too. We try not to ask you for too much upfront, but we do want you to know that we will look at anything you want us to see. We're hoping to be able to tell the story of the East Hampton Public Schools in a way that probably you can't. I was a teacher for many, many years. I was a principal for many years. And in all of that time, it never failed to amaze me how very often the kids would go home from school, mom or dad would say, "How did everything go?" And the answer would be, "Great. Good day today." And that's all you'd hear. But there's more to it than that. And there are things that happen, and there are things that cause other things to happen. And that's what we look for in the review, and that's what we try to tell the public. The onsite visit is the most visible part of what we do, not necessarily the most important, but the most visible. We'll be here for four days. We will come in and start with an introductory meeting, so we speak to pretty much anyone that you would like to have in the room, to just kind of introduce the team members, give a little bit about their background. And then one of the important things that we will do is we will listen to you. We will ask you, what kinds of things do you want our team to focus on? Now, we're coming in with a lot of questions already, based on the data that we have looked at in Malden. However, there are different ways to ask questions, and there are different things you want to find out. So we'll ask you, is there something you particularly like the team to look at? This is a rare opportunity for someone to have six people who are former principals, superintendents, business managers, curriculum coordinators, ESL directors, folks who have served well for many years, at no expense to the district, to come in and take a look at the kinds of systems that you have in place, and give you an idea of how effective they may be compared to other districts in Massachusetts. I mean, very often we look at things and we think, "Yeah, I'm doing a pretty good job with this." Well, a pretty good job could be anything from, well, it's getting the job done minimally, all the way up to, "This is the best thing that we've seen in Massachusetts in the last three months, three years, five years." So we kind of have that point of view. We have the chance to look at many different districts and kind of get a bird's eye picture of where everything is, so we can help you with that too. We will look at, we will invite school committee members to speak with the team. You don't have to, but would love to have you answer some questions for us. We will ask the district leaders, the school leaders, for interviews. We'll ask the teachers' union to answer some questions for us. We'll invite parents to come to a focus group. We will invite teachers to come to a focus group. Any teacher in the district is welcome to join us, chat with the committee. You don't have to have any kind of preparation. One of the things that we will be doing is kind of comparing information, not to make sure that everyone is telling the truth. Those days have passed. But what we will be doing is asking questions to different groups of people to see where the information gets to. Do the teachers know all of the district kinds of activities? And if not, which ones do they not know, and should they know those? So that's one of the reasons that we do some of those kinds of things. We will ask for a focus group with municipal officials, the mayor perhaps, or someone from the finance committee. We will spend some time with the team, talking together. We will make sure that everyone on the team knows what everyone else on the team has learned so far. And then we'll have a closing meeting. We'll invite to the closing meeting the regional assistance director, and we will go directly from the accountability review right into department assistance. So anything that the team thinks might be a good point for the district to look at, to count, to consider doing, we'll start right there and then, with whatever assistance the department can provide to you. It's important for us to mention that one of the ways we gather our information is by looking at policies, processes, practices, and outcomes. This is a very standards-based systems kind of analysis. And we'll do that by gathering information from documents, from interviews, and from data. All of those we'll look at from the school, the district, and the classroom point of view. The intention here is to make sure that the information that we get is as accurate as we possibly can when it comes time to findings, recommendations. This is a four-day process that starts us out with sorting through the evidence, coming to consensus on findings. And the consensus process is much stronger, we think, than actually calling for votes. You actually have to get a room with six experts to agree on what they saw. That's not all that easy, very often. This is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's not very easy for us even to agree on what time lunch is, in many cases. However, we're going to try to make sure that the team all agrees on what they've seen. And then we'll work to develop priority findings. There will be somewhere between six and 18 of those, just to make sure that it's a manageable number for you to consider. And then we'll develop preliminary recommendations from that. The next step is refining the draft. We'll look at all of the findings and recommendations. Our lead editor is a former practicing attorney, former parent council member, and a person whose evidence standard is very impressive. So if someone on the team writes down, "Interviewers said that," she will make sure that there is evidence in the notes from all of those interviews to make sure that that actually was said. These are people who work as consultants to the department, but the department feels that we have a very strong obligation to make sure that everything they say is accurate and reflects perfectly, as well as humanly possible, the things that they heard while they were here in the district. If you wish, when we're done, we'll offer you two additional things. Well, one of them is a chance to make absolutely certain that our findings are accurate. We'll send a draft of just the findings to Superintendent Folesby. We'll ask her to review it for factual correctness. Pretty much every district in Massachusetts has a number of programs that they identify with acronyms. And sometimes the acronyms are a little quick, as far as our folks. In fact, sometimes the acronyms are so well-known in the district that when you ask, "And what does Project LEAD stand for?", the folks that we're asking might not even know. So that's one of the things we ask to make sure happens. We want to have that act as correct as we possibly can as well. The recommendations that come from this will be things that are designed to not be prescriptive, but to be descriptive. There will be things in there like, "The district should carefully reconsider this," or "Should consider continuing its efforts too." There'll be a lot of things that give you an opportunity to think about what the team members saw and how it works with you. There are no right answers. We have determined that years ago. There are lots of things that work some places, but not others. And you are the best ones to come up with that answer as to how it works. But we will try our best to make sure that you have some options to think about. Finally, the report will be published. I said earlier that there'll be a couple of things that we offer you. One is a report out to the committee. When the report is completed, we will be happy to come back and tell you what it says and where it fits in terms of other districts across Massachusetts. The other thing that we'll offer, and this is your choice as well, is what we call a next steps meeting, or a prioritization meeting, where we will come back and we'll help the district leader team, leadership team, look at the findings and the recommendations, decide what, if anything, they wish to pursue, and which ones are the highest payback. So an opportunity to make use of some other outside brain power, if you will. The report will be published on the department website. And you folks will certainly have copies of it before it gets published. So at that point, I think we will have completed our assistance with you folks. And I will turn you over to the targeted assistance people in the department to provide any additional resources that we can do that for you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have one, Mr. Roper. You have given us a pretty accurate rundown or outline as to how these four days are going to flow. When do you expect the final recommendation to be published?
Our recommendations this year have been six to 10 weeks.
Okay.
Between the actual review. So probably by the beginning of school next year, you'll have.
Excellent.
It has, in the past, taken us much longer, so we've had to cut things back. Your findings and recommendations will be bullet points.
Okay. Okay.
There will be less text, less flowery language. They're quicker for us to write, and frankly, quicker for you to, to work with, too. So, those will be, the, the report is much smaller than it used to be. It used to be, well, at one point, they were a hundred and something pages long. This one will be more likely twenty pages tops. So, it, it, we're, we're doing the best we can to get them to you while they're still fresh and while the, the recommendations are still actionable.
Okay. Any other questions? John, can I just ask, what is your role in our review? Will you be here on site for those four days, or are you?
I hope to be here at least for a day. My role is to, well, I, I work with the department to try to make this process a little easier for districts. I have never met a superintendent who sits with his or her feet up on the desk for much time during the day. I occasionally call them and say, "Hi, are you finished with your nap yet?" And I generally get a desired reaction from that. But one of the things we do try to do is make this as minimally intrusive as we can. So, that's a big piece of my role. But the other part is to supervise the teams and to make sure that what the department has said we will do, that the team will in fact do. We want to be making sure that their service, both to the district and to the Commonwealth, is exactly the way it's advertised. So, I will be here. I'll be sitting in on interviews. I will be holding private meetings with, with people who are asking the questions and helping to improve the process, I hope. We will also, by the way, send you a link to a survey when we're done, and we'll ask Superintendent Fonsby to send it to the school committee members, to people who participated in the interviews, so that we can get some, some additional feedback from you and maybe improve the process a little bit more.
Okay.
John, I just have one question. Do we, do you know at this point who the evaluators will be for our district? Or will you let us know ahead of time who they are?
You will, not only will you know ahead of time, but you will have their biographies and their pictures, so that you will have an opportunity to get back to me and say, "Not this one. I know this one from the," you know, so. I put pictures in because people's names change from time to time. So, we will have that for you in advance. I would say, yes, I do know them. However, this afternoon, a group changed, so I'm not sure which people will be actually coming here. We will now have two reviews going on the same week, so. But that, that also makes it easier. If you want to challenge any review team member, I'll just move them from one team to the other and know they're already available and ready to go, so.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
I look forward to seeing you in June.
I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring the process to you, and I, I hope we can have a wonderfully productive and helpful district review.
Okay. Thank you. Don't forget your flash drive. We were scheduled to have a presentation by Ms. Nancy Dunn at this time for SAD, but she's unable to make it this evening. So, let's get to our subcommittee reports. Finance?
So, finance, we have a meeting scheduled for May 21st at 7:00 P.M.
Okay, May 21st. Policy?
We have three new, three first readings of new policies tonight. The first one is the GCF professional staff hiring policy. And Superintendent Fonsby recommended adoption of this new policy to provide guidelines for the process of hiring professional staff. Currently, we don't have a policy for this. We do have policies for the creation of positions, job descriptions, salary schedules, and support staff hiring, but not for the process of hiring professional staff. So, a motion to accept the first reading would move this process forward.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor of the first reading moving forward on this professional staff hiring policy? Aye. Opposed?
The next policy is the, a policy IGD curriculum adoption. Superintendent Fonsby recommended adoption of this new policy to clarify the process of approving new curriculum, including the high school program of studies. We currently do not have a policy addressing curriculum adoption. And just to clarify, the school committee will continue to approve extensive curriculum changes. This new policy confirms the need to inform the school committee of those changes, and that acceptance of those changes is required for adoption.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
So, a motion to approve policy, the first reading of policy IGD curriculum adoption.
Second?
I just have a question.
Yes.
When you say extensive, when you talk about extensive changes, I'm just wondering if, if you could define, for clarity, what is extensive? How do we define that versus something that's not extensive?
I'm going to ask Nancy if she could speak to that.
That's a good question. I, I think it's when it departs from, you know, what we've currently been doing. If, if it's a small change in a, in a course or a course structure, that would not be extensive. But if we were going to implement a, something very different from what we currently have in place, that would be an extensive change.
So, this year, when we added twenty-some-odd new courses to the high school program of studies, would that be considered extensive?
If they were just, you know, additions, other sections of a course, or similar to courses that we have, not necessarily. But if it was a, a brand-new program that we were bringing into place, then that would be extensive, yes.
So, like the robotics?
Like the robotics, yes.
The science/technology classes that have been added?
I think the robotics would be a good example, because that's something that we don't currently have, and we don't have anything like that. So, that would be an extensive change.
So, that would be something that the school committee would approve?
That's right.
Yes.
I see. Okay.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of accepting the first reading of policy IGD curriculum adoption, signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed?
Third policy is policy JBA, student-to-student harassment. Superintendent Fonsby recommended we adopt this new policy, and this is not to be confused with the bully policy that we do have in place. Harassment is a separate issue.
And I just want to mention that, you know, the, the reason we're adopting a new student-to-student harassment policy and our staff hiring policy is because it now includes gender identity as a, a means of discrimination. So, we want to be sure that we have that in our policy.
Motion to approve the first reading of policy JBA, student-to-student harassment.
Second? Do I hear a second? Second? All those in favor of first reading of policy JBA, student-to-student harassment, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? First reading accepted of all three. Thank you. And Samantha?
My turn.
Yes.
Okay, so, we've been really busy at the high school.
I hope, I bet.
We have a new high school now, so it's really exciting. And this past week and this current week, we've been taking AP tests, so things like chemistry, history is actually this week, statistics, calculus, all that jazz, and everyone's been a little stressed out about that, but we've been managing. The arts festival was recently held at the Old Town Hall, and I wasn't able to personally go there, but I heard that there was a lot of great art. Actually, our own Bailey Murphy had a great piece up, and she won a little award for that, so it was awesome. Our band and, our high school band and chorus are having their concert Thursday night in New EHS Auditorium. It is free to come, and we encourage everyone to come. Check out our new auditorium. Check out our awesome music program that we have here at the high school. And it starts at 7:00 P.M. this Saturday. At Forest Park is the Pioneer Valley Heart Walk, and one of our own students, a junior, Sarah Senkowitz, actually has a team going. And so, we're really excited to get out there and represent our community and support the American Heart Association. And at the end of the month, seniors have our finals and all of our great events and graduation on June 7th, like Ms. Fonsby said. And we're done. It's awesome. So.
Oh, we're never done.
No, no, we're never done. And we're all going to go to more school, but.
Okay. Bailey and Samantha, will your last school committee meeting be next meeting? Is that?
I believe so.
I think that would make sense, wouldn't it? The next meeting?
I believe so.
All right.
And I just want to mention that I think this is going to be a very exciting graduation, because it's the first graduation in our new high school, so we're very much looking forward to it.
Yes, we are.
Special class here that's graduating this year.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I'm sorry, I skipped over the CES update report.
Yes, you did. I could not attend the meeting that we had last week due to a conflict, but I do have a CES finance subcommittee meeting I will be attending on May 24th. So, just to update you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Superintendent Fonsby, I think it's time for your report, and you are going to try to move the agenda around a little bit with your report, correct?
Yes, we'll, we'll bring my report up to the top, the request for new positions, and then we can follow the schedule after that, if that works for the school committee.
Yes, that's fine.
So, I have a PowerPoint that's going to help us with this presentation, and I'm going to ask Ann Knapp in a few minutes to come up and share her part of this presentation as well. So, the purpose of this presentation is to give everyone a clear understanding of why are we, why we are requesting two new positions, a Tier Two Interventionist and a ten-month Assistant Principal for Center Peppin. The requested positions are necessary in order to put into place a comprehensive approach to meeting the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of all children in our district within the framework of funding sources currently available in the district. Were funding sources better, we wouldn't be needing to make choices. But because of the funding situation that we find ourselves in, we are having to make choices. The funding for these positions comes from a reallocation of resources, which meant the elimination of two school adjustment counselor positions and, and some other reallocation of resources within the district. I want to assure you that I and our leadership team of administrators have given this proposal a great deal of thought and have conducted thorough research into covering all the known questions. This proposal comes from the work done at leadership team meetings over a long process starting much earlier in the year. We will continue to do our research by asking teachers and parents before the implementation and hiring process to provide information on what issues they see need to be addressed in our schools. I am, oops, I'm not going to introduce Ann yet. So, this is our 2013, 2014 social, emotional, behavioral staffing proposal. So, what this model does not do, and I know there's, there's been great concern out in the district, but what this model does not do is eliminate any services currently in place for our students. What this model does, it increases support for students and staff in every building, provides a comprehensive team approach to social, emotional, and behavioral issues, provides direct support to general education and special education students with social, emotional, and behavioral needs, provides support to classroom teachers and paraprofessionals, supports all students to be able to effectively access the high-quality educational programs offered in our schools. And now, I'm going to bring Ann Knapp forward, and she's going to talk to you in detail about each of the positions and the responsibilities for each position. And she's also going to introduce a little bit about herself and why she put this proposal forth. And then we'll summarize at the end and allow time for any questions that she may have.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm really much better with teachers and kids than I am with large groups of adults, so please be patient with me. I'm Ann Knapp, and I'm actually going to go to the.
Oh, and actually, I should have done that one, Ann.
I'll go the next one.
Well, Ann, why don't we talk about, why don't we talk about this one? Sorry.
Ann, could I ask you to speak up? Because that, since that kicked up, I don't know that everyone can hear you.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no, no.
Can you, you can stay up here, Ann. Can you all hear us from here? Can you hear us okay? Okay, so, I did want to start and talk about this piece, because this is really my piece, the leadership team piece as opposed to Ann's piece. So, one of the positions that we would add in this new proposal is an elementary assistant principal at Center Peppin Schools. Currently, we have two elementary schools with approximately 200 students in each school and one principal managing all of those students and, and all of those teachers. With the new educator evaluation system that's come into place, we find that it's really created an impossible situation for one principal to act, to effectively be an instructional leader in a school that size without support. Mr. Orlando's two schools have approximately the same number of students and staff as our high school, are very close to our high school and our middle school, which both have assistant principals. This would be a ten-month position, not a full-time position. The responsibilities of the assistant principal would be to collaborate with the principal to address student discipline, implement school-wide positive behavior support, building support team, our BST membership, work directly with students who need specific supports, and collaborate with outside agencies to coordinate wraparound services. In addition, this person would also collaborate with the principal on professional development and any other duties that the principal saw fit. But this kind of gives you an overview of where we think these responsibilities will aid our students and our staff who are currently there. Now, Ann, supervising staff, of course, because that's part of our new evaluation system.
Okay, I will try and speak louder, sorry. Superintendent Fonsby asked if I could sort of introduce myself and give you a little bit of background about myself. When I arrived in East Hampton, Nancy asked me to evaluate current special education services through the lens of my experience as an administrator who has implemented inclusion, participated in a successful district turnaround, and managed behavioral programs. As I evaluated, the following themes emerged. Many social, emotional, behavior, teacher support, and consultation services were being delivered by consultants who were being paid at a very high hourly rate. They were also providing minimal services directly to students. Service delivery models and student supports varied between schools and between the levels in our curriculum, in our district. All students would benefit from services provided in a Tier Two model. Tier Two is service, are services for students who need added support that are not at the special education level in order to access the curriculum.
So, Ann, to be clear, students not on an IEP?
Right. And that school adjustment counselors were being asked to perform many functions that were outside of the scope of their training. In response to these findings, I submitted the following proposal. In 2012, 2013, Center Peppin had .37 psychologist. A one full, now, let me explain what an FTE is. FTE is a full-time equivalent. It describes how much of a full-time position a person is occupying. It also allows the district to keep track of how many full-time positions there are in the district and how positions are used, being used in part. There was one full-time school adjustment counselors and two full-time behavior teachers. One was providing support to a very small, substantially separate program where students were served throughout their day outside of the. were served throughout their day outside of the general education setting. And one was providing services to the students who had behavior needs, who were being served in the inclusion setting. The 2013-2014 proposal would be a .3 FTE Interventionist. And you'll see later that this is a lower ratio, lower amount of time for a full-time position than is at Maple. The reason for this is with the addition of an assistant principal at Center Peppin, many of the behavioral issues and many of the behavioral supports would fall under their auspices. We would go from a .37 psychologist to a half-time psychologist. There would be the one full-time equivalent assistant principal, which is a 10-month position, as Nancy said. And we would go to a one full-time equivalent Behavior Teacher, who would be running a program that would follow the model that is already in place at Maple, which is a mostly inclusion model with the ability to provide supports for students in a substantially separate setting as they are needed. Maple. This, this year at Maple, again, there is a .37 FTE psychologist. And let me be clear that by having the psychologist's role diminished, we lost half a position last year, it means that psychologists now are only providing cognitive assessments for the district. A .7 full-time equivalent School Adjustment Counselor. One full-time equivalent Behavior Teacher. For the 2013-2014, we'd have a .7 full-time Tier Two Interventionist. A .5 full-time psychologist. We would continue to have the full-time Behavior Teacher. We would have a .25 autism specialist. The amount of students that we are having come into the preschool setting who are on the spectrum, who are classically autistic, is astonishing. Right now, the Behavior Teacher is also providing these types of services with the help of consultants to the preschool. And we will transfer one paraprofessional position from Center Peppin to Maple to assume responsibilities for PK paraprofessional. Let me say that right now, we are paying $55 an hour to May Institute to provide these services.
And what does PK mean?
Preschool.
Okay. Can you go back two slides for just a second to the Center Peppin and then pause at the Maple, if you don't mind? I missed the last two lines. I'm just trying to take some.
I don't know if I can do that.
Andy, can you help her?
It's okay. Sorry.
It's not that I'm unwilling, it's truly, I'm unable. Oh, thank you.
Just.
Center Peppin one?
Yeah, just for like a half-second and then quickly to the, yeah.
And we can make this PowerPoint available to anyone who wants it, so don't feel like you have to copy everything down and it can be made available to anyone who needs it.
And while I'm writing this, can you just explain briefly what a Behavior Teacher is, Ann?
Behavior Teachers are currently special education teachers who are teaching the behavior program, in the behavior programs. They are providing direct students, direct services to students, and they are also supervising the paraprofessionals.
Would that be, would an example of that be Judy Avril?
Yes.
Is that the position she?
And again, there's a difference between how those positions are being used between the two schools.
Right.
Where one teacher at Center Peppin is providing some of the same services that Judy is providing at Maple, another teacher at Center Peppin is working with a minimum amount of children in a substantially separate setting. And one of the reasons that we look forward to having students served in a type of program where there's fluidity in the borders between substantially separate services and inclusion services is whenever possible, it is regulatorily demanded and best practice for us to return students to the inclusion as soon as is possible and is feasible.
One final question, just regarding the ABA para, now, is that, so you envision that being somebody who's there for both the morning and the afternoon preschool program, and she floats, or he or she floats between the two classrooms?
The, and this is not the time or the place to discuss it, but there will be some changes in the way we provide services within the preschool so that there's more option for there to be targeted instruction for students who need it. So, we, and also because at this point, we are having to refer children out of district because we cannot provide a full-day program for our students with classic autism who need it. This would also enable us to provide that type of program for our students within the district.
And what does ABA stand for?
Applied Behavioral Analysis. Okay, now, let's see if I can. Okay. Again, at Whitebrook and Center Peppin, and the high school, we had a .37 psychologist at each building. There was one FTE School Adjustment Counselor at each building. There was one full-time equivalent Behavior Teacher at each building. And there was one full-time equivalent Autism Teacher at each building. And at the high school, the autism teacher also provided life skills for those students who were not going to be graduating. They were students who were going to get a certificate of attendance and require adult services. In 2013-2014, we will have a .5 Interventionist shared. Each, each, the building would each have .5 of a full-time position. I knew I wasn't going to say that right. The same with the psychologist, there would be one psychologist that would be shared between the two buildings. We would maintain the full-time School Adjustment Counselor. There would be a full-time equivalent Behavior Teacher. And we would, of course, keep the full-time equivalent Autism Life Skills Teacher.
Can you talk about? Can you go back to that?
And those were for each building?
Okay. No, oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, to be clear, those were for each building, so that's.
Those are for, there would be one School Adjustment Counselor in each building, and there would be one Behavior Teacher and Autism Teacher in each building.
And the Behavior Teachers currently have substantially separate programs.
Right. That's one of the reasons why we are maintaining the School Adjustment Counselor position as well as the other supports. At this point, the Behavior Program and, to a lesser extent, the Autism Program, but still much higher than we want to see that program, are substantially separate programs that really function very separately from the general education curriculum. I see you nodding and going, yeah.
Yeah, my brother's part of the Special Education Department up at the high school.
Right.
Yeah, you're, that's autism and life skills teacher you're speaking of is Joanne Orlock, right? Yep, okay.
And so, what we need, why we need to maintain, at least for next year, the School Adjustment Counselor, is at that point, the Interventionist is going to be providing a lot of support to the Behavior Teacher and the Autism Teacher at those, at those levels so that they can build a program that is much more inclusive in nature and much clearer in their purpose. Okay?
The role of an Interventionist?
Mm-hmm, that's the Tier Two Interventionist.
Okay, so that's someone who's available for the entire student population?
I'll get to that in one second. I think I'll make it a lot clearer when you see the job responsibilities.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's what I was curious about, the, okay.
Because if I get distracted, I'll never get back to where I was. Okay. So, the elementary staffing in this is, would include one school psychologist shared between the three buildings. So, it would be shared by Maple and Center Peppin. One Tier Two Interventionist shared by Maple and Center Peppin. One Behavior Teacher for Maple. One Behavior Teacher for Center Peppin. One 10-hour-a-week autism consultant, autism specialist for the pre-kindergarten at Maple. One PK para at Maple, and this is the transfer. One 10-month Assistant Principal for Center Peppin. For the high school and the middle school, there would be one school psychologist shared between Whitebrook and East Hampton High. One Tier Two Interventionist shared by Whitebrook and East Hampton, and the high school. One School Adjustment Counselor at Whitebrook. One School Adjustment Counselor at the high school. One Behavior Teacher at the middle school. One Behavior Teacher at EHS. The school psychologist responsibilities, and you're going to have to bear with me, I really do need my notes to make sure I get everything in there. The first responsibility of the school psychologist will be evaluation. Because school psychologists will not only be doing evaluation, but will be doing direct social, emotional services with children, they will be able to provide us with a much clearer holistic picture of the children they're evaluating. They would also help us to, when we do have to refer out, to, for students, for an outside clinical psychological evaluation, they would also provide a lot more information going out to that process, to shorten that process of using. They will be the building support team, BST member. This is the team that addresses student needs, that, for Tier One and Tier Two interventions, and it is part of the pre-referral process for special education. Up until this year, when we had to make the cut of a one-half-time school psychologist, the school psychologists were a valued member of the BST team. They will be doing counseling of individuals and groups for students with, with and without special needs. And this is social, emotional counseling.
Ann, do you have any way to project how many hours, for example, a week, they might be available for that kind of counseling? Or is there?
I can't as much project how many hours a week, but what I can say is that, given the amount of hours a week that we are having these School Adjustment Counselors available for that kind of activity, they can fulfill those hours. I haven't thought about it that way. I've thought about it more, what are the hours, the service delivery hours, and what are the needs, and can they meet those needs? They will be a school Behavior Team member. At this point, schools do not have true Behavior Teams, where they look, where you're able to look at students from a multidisciplinary approach to see what is driving behavior and what the best responses are. They will be available to do crisis protocols. At this point, so, School Adjustment Counselors have taken over that role that, again, was the psychologist's role before we cut the position, behalf of position. They will be a member of the District Crisis Response Team. And this was very important to us because in this time where we never know what is going to happen, we need to be able to serve the needs of all the community should there be some sort of tragic event that, where the community needs that type of social, emotional support. They will be working with myself and the Interventionist, the Behavior Teachers, and the Special Education Coordinators and Building Administration to develop vertical and horizontal alignment of behavioral programs. And they will be responsible for, mostly for students who have not been identified as needing special education, because that's really a role that meant the teachers have adopted over the years. But for those students who have not yet been identified for special education, coordination of communication with outside providers and parents. They will be trained in our Crisis Prevention Institute procedures, which is the de-escalation of and response to behaviors that pose a threat to the student themselves, others, or property. They will provide collaborative supports, methods, and structures for all students. And again, that collaborative, triangulated way of looking at students and what we're doing. So, it's a really multidisciplinary approach. Tier Two Interventionist responsibilities. They will, on an as-need basis, provide consultation to the Behavior Program teachers and paraprofessionals. For the teachers, all of us get to a point where our toolboxes are empty and we've tried everything. And this is the person that they get to turn around to and say, "Help." General Education Teachers Tier Two Consultation. And I want to be very specific about this, that it will be not only about addressing challenging behaviors that are already present in the classroom, but helping teachers work to design management strategies and classroom practices that look at reducing those behaviors from popping up. That's not the right way to say it, but you know what I mean. It also will provide teachers with somebody to even bounce ideas off of when they've reached a curriculum impasse with a student. It'd also be providing support to any of the paraprofessionals who are working in the inclusion setting. Individual and group social skills instruction for all students. So, for those kids who need the friendship groups, for those kids who just need practice, they'll be providing those. For students who are on the autism spectrum, they will be providing direct social skills instruction, which will be different from pragmatic language instruction for those students. They are two separate skills. Those will be provided by the speech and language pathologist. They, again, will be members of the BST, Crisis Prevention Institute teams, and Behavior Teams. So, again, that multidisciplinary approach. They will be completing general education functional behavioral assessments. A functional behavioral assessment is something that, again, is required by regulation for any student that is going to be referred to special education due to behavioral issues, unless it's a crisis or there's a diagnosis that says, "Stop, you really need to look at this." They will be doing the behavioral intervention plans for those students that follow the assessment, because after we assess, we have to have a plan for addressing what the assessment finds. They will be doing the Applied Behavioral Analysis Coordination for students with autism spectrum disorders. So, for those students who are not in the preschool, they will be the person that will have expertise. So for those students who are not in the preschool, they will be the person that will have expertise in this area. Again, they will work with my, all of the same players, myself, the teachers, administrators, coordinators, the psychologists, to create vertical and horizontal alignment of programs. And this is a way for us to provide collaborative support, methods, and structures for all students. That's it?
Just a few questions.
Mm-hmm.
Anne, really quickly. Firstly, what are the requirements in education and experience to be hired as an interventionist? And how does that compare to the same requirements for the school adjustment counselor positions?
Well, the interventionist, and this is where there's a difference. The interventionist will be looking at someone who has experience, significant experience, in developing, managing, and functioning as an in-district consultant to behavior programs and general education programs. Although a BCBA would be a nice added benefit, as someone who's looked at programs and how they've run over a number of different districts, I found that people who bring a willingness to provide a number of different theories of education to looking at students actually provides us with a richer. So what I'm really looking for is somebody who has a proven track record of expertise in helping students not reach the level of behavioral escalation that it begins to interfere with their ability to access content and to help teachers address those students where those behaviors have already surfaced.
And how does that relate to the general education students?
Because what's gonna hap, what happens is, is when they go in and they work with teachers about, let's look at what's driving an increased in behaviors for students. Many times, what you find is that there's a great deal of academic frustration that when you're a teacher and you've got 22 kids in front of you, you need another pair of eyes. And you need another pair of eyes that has expertise in looking at, the word is, the antecedent. What comes before the behavior. And then what that response is to that antecedent.
And Anne, I think you should define BCBA.
A BCBA is very interesting. It is a board-certified behavioral analyst. There is no licensure by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for a BCBA. In point of fact, licensure as a profession has just come into the Commonwealth. I believe it was January of this year, but don't hold me to that. So it is a relatively new field. It really has come from the fields of autism and the fields of special education. And it is a specialty within those frameworks.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Anne.
So do you wanna open it up for questions from, to Anne and myself?
I'm going to open it up. Are you, would you like me to open it up now? You're the one that's saying anything else, right?
No. All right. I understand that there are some present tonight that would like to speak to this particular issue on our agenda. So now is the time for what we call public speak. And this is how we handle it. Please come forward to the podium and give your name and speak. And on this particular issue, I only ask you that you, you know, be considerate of how many others might be coming after you to speak. And if you have a question, a specific question that you would like to pose, please pose your question from the podium, and we will get to the questions after everyone has spoken. So, who's first?
Yeah, Nancy, can I ask a question first? Is that okay, or should I wait till they're?
I think we, let's wait until after we've had the presentations.
Hi, my name is Michelle Kraus, and I have two sons at Maple Street School. One is Joseph Kraus, who's in the back, and one is Jackson Kraus. And when Jackson Kraus had heard about the possibility of Jara not being available at school for him, he was, he wanted to come and share why he thinks it's so important to have Jara there.
Can you just explain, maybe not everyone here is aware of who that is?
Okay.
Who you're referring to?
Jara is the adjustment counselor at Maple School.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think Jara should be here because, um, if she wasn't, I wouldn't be able to make it through the day. Because, um, I'm having hard, um, some hard times in my life right now, and she's helping me. And, um, I think it's better to talk to her because when I don't, I usually get into trouble because I can't focus.
So Jara's been an integral part of my children's life at Maple. And having someone there on the front lines for them, I think, is extremely important. And it's been so helpful to my children, and I think it's been very helpful to their teachers to have that resource for them. And I would, I would hate to see that go. One of the things that we love about East Hampton is Maple Street School, and I think having Jara there is something that adds to the school. And I would be very, very sad to see that frontline support go away. And it would honestly, I, I love this town and I love the schools. And losing that support would definitely give me a reason to possibly look for somewhere else for them to go. So, Joseph Kraus, who is too shy to speak but is in the back. He sees Jara, as he tells me, probably on a daily basis. He's struggled greatly through kindergarten this year. And I think that for him to have a day of success is a big thing for him, to him to be able to make it through the day. And I think that he makes it through the day because of great people like Jara.
Can we ask them questions now, Anne?
We'll wait till they-
I'm sorry, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Katie Barubi. I'm a reading specialist at Maple School. And Ryan Pickard will read excerpts from a letter we delivered to Superintendent Follinsby on May 9. This letter was written after a meeting after school on Friday, May 3. And we did surveys of all of the staff, and we made multiple drafts, and we shared these with our staff and the Maple community. And this represents the feeling of 39 teachers and staff at Maple School. Thank you.
So I'll just read highlights. "We feel that a school adjustment counselor is as necessary to a school as a nurse. Many children complain each day of aches and pains that are actually physical manifestations of emotional problems. Sometimes it's an acute crisis, such as a fight in the morning, or the loss of a grandparent. And other times, it's more chronic issues, such as divorce, illness, or simple childhood anxiety. Having a school adjustment counselor whose entire job is to work directly with children creates an amazing safety net for our school because she's not a disciplinarian, but instead has a reputation among children as a safe person. And students always feel good about seeing that counselor. Teachers triage problems all day long and will continue to do so. But without a person at the school who has the professional tools necessary to handle emotional crises, instructional time is wasted. The mental health of our students is as important as their physical health. We are proud that Maple School is a healthy place for children in all aspects of their lives. And for the above reasons, we believe Maple needs to keep our school adjustment counselor position." Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Linda Aviard. I'm the adjustment counselor for Center and Peppin Schools. I've been here 13 years, and when I think of the role, it's so encompassing. It's hard to kind of put it all together. I've worked under Tim, Clint Burt, Brian Fink, and now Rob Orlando. I, when I, I love what you said because there are kids who would not make it through their days. Usually, the beginning of the school year finds myself out in the parking lot helping parents to get their kids out of the car in order to come to school. There are children who arrive at our school who need to start every day with a relaxation group in order to reduce their level of anxiety, in order to make it through their day. I spend a large portion of my day on the playground where, if I haven't been able to get to kids in another arena, they're able to take me aside to a corner of the playground and talk. Talk out whatever's on their mind so that when the, when the bell rings, they're ready to go back to class and learn. I am unfortunately the one who communicates with DCF and has a lot of parent communication. When I started 13 years ago, I was able to actually go out to people's homes and do a little bit of that, but times have changed. And the number of children that we're getting into our schools now where, whose families are falling apart in different ways for different reasons has increased tremendously. And that is, and that is also a big role that I play, checking in with them and, and making a lot of parent contact and seeing what we can do to help the families so that the child's life can be stabilized. On top of that, running social skills groups, seeing some individuals, collaborating with the nurse, certainly helping the principal in any way that he needs it. I think me being on the playground is a huge help for him. I know that it's a huge help for the teachers because we've seen a huge decrease when the kids are done with the playground time and, and their lunchtime, being able to go back into class and settle right in. As opposed to something dramatic happening on the playground and it's sending them into a tailspin and not being able to come back from that. Just today, I have my schedule that I follow every day, but I certainly do leave myself spots because things come up, which is what I love about the job. You never know what you're gonna walk into every day, and it's, and it's a variety, and it's, it's very rewarding. Just today, I found myself in the afternoon with some girls who, third-grade girls. It's, it's what I expect at this point, something changes in third grade. And, and they really needed to spend some time with me to work through some difficulties. And I got them through that, and they went back to class and feeling, feeling really good. There's so much to the job. It's, I, I don't know, I, I see the outline, and I don't know how a school psychologist can possibly fill that role. So, and that's it, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So my name is Gina Wyman. I'm a parent at Maple School. This is my, our first year with my daughter in the school. And I wanna say, all of this, we actually have a choice spot at Leeds next year. And I thought coming to this meeting would really make me, depending on how the decision goes, make me decide to choice my kids into Northampton. But I wanna tell the teachers that after seeing you all stand up with Ryan, like, there's no way that I would leave Maple. I feel so proud of you all. I just like, it's, you guys are really wonderful. All right, so Rebecca Beltratemi and I, we're both parents at Maple, wrote a letter to the Gazette, and I'm gonna just read it here, and then I just have a couple of questions. "We were distressed to learn last week that the administrators of the East Hampton Public Schools are proposing to eliminate the school adjustment counselor positions at Maple, Center, and Peppin, the three elementary schools in the district. As Maple School parents and as educators, we have many concerns. School adjustment counselors play a critical role in supporting students and teachers in the elementary setting. They run small groups for children dealing with issues such as divorce, loss, and self-advocacy. They teach children about personal safety, peaceful problem-solving, disability awareness, and handling transitions. Without a proactive approach to the emotional health of the whole school population, more students will need serious interventions. Another important function of this position is to help students make sense of traumatic events such as the shootings at Sandy Hook Elementary or the bombings in Boston. When we think about these recent tragedies, we know there is a need for trained mental health staff in our schools. Furthermore, the manner in which the elimination of the school counselors has been pursued by the school department has been disconcerting. In making a proposal that would have a significant impact on the students and community of East Hampton, there has been no communication with elementary school parents. Much as it did with its efforts to reconfigure the elementary schools earlier this year, the school department is again trying to make drastic changes to the services it offers the students without obtaining any input or feedback from those individuals most affected by the proposal. The lack of transparency in the decision-making process implied by the school district is just as troubling as the resulting proposal. And I want to say about that, I hear that there will be no changes in services. However, I also see the teachers here tonight telling what the impact would be. And there, it does not seem that the teachers had the opportunity to give that feedback to anyone before the proposal came before the school committee this evening. And that is very troubling to me again, in, just in decision-making and process and how transparent the process is and how you're using the resources that you have available, these, these teachers. The question I have about, and you might have answered it, Anne, but I, if you did, I didn't understand, is about the training of the interventionist. Do they have, like, I know that our school adjustment counselor has a master's in social work. Do they have that sort of mental health training? And I understand that there's gonna be a half-time psychologist. But I also know, as a parent of a daughter in the special ed, in special ed services, that the psychologists have so many evaluations to do. That I think if you have a .5 person at Maple, I would be surprised if there was a lot of time left over to run the groups that Jara's running on, you know, a daily basis. Not only is she running different groups, I mean, my daughter knows of five different kids in her class and the reason, you know, or not the reasons, but five different kids in her class that see Jara for different reasons. And she's also in all the classrooms doing the anti-bullying curriculum. She does second step in at least half the classrooms in the school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. I'm gonna speak for my daughter. She's third grader. And, uh-
Could you just tell us your name?
Mine's Bonnie Johnson.
Okay.
And my daughter's a third grader. I'm gonna speak for her. She's not here. Relationships are pretty confusing when you're in third grade. And sometimes you come home and they tell you a lot more than you want them, than to know. You know, the gentleman here said, "Some kids just say, 'I had a great day.'" Well, sometimes I hear a lot of stuff, and it's upsetting. And I don't, and I help her, I talk to her, but sometimes she really needs to go back into school. And having Jara there and being able to talk to Jara, being able to build relationships, be able to fix relationships. It's not always so easy to fix a little girl's self-esteem or how she's dealing with her, her best friend or another friend. And I've been in the school system for about nine years. And having somebody like Jara when my son was in school would have been amazing. It would have helped him so much. And having this opportunity, she has helped us so well. There were crying nights and, you know, really hard spells we've gone through. And just she has lunch with her, she talks to her, and it's just, she trusts her. And when we go to Girl Scouts, all the girls, they talk about Jara. They say, "Okay, we're having this problem. Well, you know, Jara's there. She's at school. She can help us all." She, you know, she's there for us. To have that kind of trust for somebody who's there all the time is amazing. It's just not, it's so invaluable, it's so valuable, it's priceless. And it would be really sad not to have that.
Thank you.
My name is Margaret Betts. I teach first grade at Maple. Since writing our letter, we have received a copy of the job descriptions that we saw- tonight. The job, job descriptions are very valuable and they underscore the problem I see with making this significant change. They are adult-centric rather than child-centric. They offer more classroom support for teachers, but very little direct service for children. The job of the assistant of the adjustment counselor is exceptionally child-focused. The work is done by social workers who are trained in clinical mental health counseling. The therapeutic training they have allows them to directly help the emotional lives of children. This person is not on call or shared, but committed to building relationships with our children in our school because she is only responsible to our kids. It would not be possible for a single person to know the intimate details of 600 children, the population of the three elementary schools. The job of the school adjustment counselor is intimate and relationship-based. It allows for the flexibility of a classroom teacher to reach out. It is not reasonable to expect a classroom teacher to call across town to bring to Maple the school psychologist for a homesick child or a peer conflict in third grade. The adjustment counselor serves as an alternative to the principal, a problem solver rather than a disciplinarian. Please carefully consider these points before eliminating the adjustment counselors at the elementary level.
Thank you.
I'm Anastasia Housey. I'm a parent at Maple School. I live over on Cherry Street. What I'm concerned is that as you're hearing kind of this, this army of parents and, and teachers here saying, "Don't take our counselor away, take our, don't take our counselor away," I'm afraid that you all are thinking, "But we have this other model, it's going to be even better." But you guys aren't, I, I'm afraid you're not going to hear that we have a really good model at Maple Street, at Maple School that has functioned higher than it has, according to the teachers that I trust, that have, that have spoken out loudly about this. We have a model that works and miraculously, we have a beautiful person to fill that model. And I don't, what, the only thing that made me go, "Excuse me?" tonight, the only thing was, "Who's Jer?" And it makes me worried that you guys don't understand the gravity of the model that looks great, no offense, I'm sure it works in many places, but if it doesn't include this person that is very effective in our school and has made great changes, it's not speaking to the reality that our teachers have on the ground. My kid does not use Jer one-on-one, but he benefits, both of them benefit from her presence because the teachers are able to do what they were called to do, which is teach. And my kid gets the benefit of that.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Wendy Blumenthal and I'm going to try to be brief because I, I'm once again at a, at a public forum opportunity for East Hampton and, and Gina, I have to agree with you, as a parent of an incoming kindergarten or somebody who up until three or four months ago was strongly considering choosing my child out to a neighboring school district, I am, I am once again floored and, and totally like awe, heartfelt, inspired by the turnout, regardless of what side of the fence anybody could have come in on, just the fact that we have people here. Because my, prior to the last three months, my perception has been, we're circling the drain and no one's paying attention. And people are paying attention. I mean, I'm all of a sudden finding myself wanting to move across town to go to Maple. And Jer, I already have a crush on you. I think everybody has been so articulate tonight and so I want to be a little bit of the devil's advocate for both sides. I'm a little bit blessed in that I am a social worker by history. I am a wannabe educator. I'm looking at Gina's program in the, for next year. And I, I fully believe that everyone sitting up at this table right now is here for the, or everybody in this room is here for the betterment of our kids and I hope to be sitting here next winter. At the same time, these guys are making really hard-ass decisions, really hard decisions. And you guys know that. You guys live it and breathe it every day in your classrooms. I have friends who are teachers who in, in this political culture right now are saying, "Arm me with counselors and nurses," when we want to talk about arming our schools and our teachers. And then we come back to this reality of, there is no easy decision to make right now in budget crises that every district is facing. And I don't think, and with all due respect Superintendent Falins, but you can correct me, I don't think I'm too far off the mark to say that in this area, aside from maybe Springfield, this district is really making and has to make some beyond hard decisions financially. And I look at a model, I look at your model and coming from a neighboring district, and again, I really, I don't want to make parallels because we're, it's apples and oranges. At the same time, the pressures that are put on the districts right now by the state for state standards and teacher evaluation, you guys know it from one end, these guys know it from a different end. And because it's new, there's not a whole lot of bridging happening everywhere and that's not a fault of the district, that's happening all across the state. But Nancy and her team, her leadership team are, are having to take a beyond hard look at things and I see, one of the things that popped out to me, because I knew when I saw this mass of people come in, I knew that I didn't need to get up and speak about saving the adjustment counselor because you guys made that point, it's, it's, it's as clear as clear. But we're at, part of what I got, and Adam, this might not be right, but is we're, you're proposing to get rid of a model and part of that is to give assistant principal support to the principals. Not that you don't need that support.
He wouldn't get one.
And you wouldn't get it. But I'm also, part of the decision-making for keeping my child in this district was in speaking to Rob Orlando and he assured me that he does very little disciplinary work at, at Center Pepin and that a large part, that's because of having a school adjustment counselor. So, those don't make sense to me. And when I think about having that assistant principal position be able to help out with things like educator eval, equality, equity, and data, that's a full-time job right there. That, the other 20 things that were listed up there with an assistant principal support, that, that's, that's above and beyond. I don't know how you're going to get one person to do all that on top of educator eval, equity, and data. I mean, I guess what I'm saying and trying to say, trying to articulate, you can boot me off the stage, is again, if we could use the momentum of the people in this building, in this room right now, the energy, the presence and the attendance and the integrity to be present with this team so that we can work as a community because Nancy and her team have to make really hard decisions. I don't think a school adjustment counselor is the way to go, but I also think we're seeing a need and you're seeing a team of leaders say, "We have to meet this need. This might, this might not be the right model and I believe it's not the right model to my core, but I also believe we have, we all have a commitment to this community, this school, district, and this leadership team to not let this be the end of it. If this doesn't go through, if, if they say, "Okay, this doesn't pass," we can't just walk away and say, "We saved our school adjustment counselor." We got to get our butts back in here and do the work on a daily basis to say, "Where are we at city council meetings? Where are we getting funding? Where are we to help this leadership team make the really hard decisions?" So, I, I urge you to not, not go through with this proposal, second, everything that was said here tonight. And I ask you guys to go out and rally the troops because we need help. We need to keep our kids in our district and we need to help these guys make the decision, the really hard decisions they have to make. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say that I know that everyone-
Excuse me, could you just tell us your name?
Oh, I'm Joan Schaefer and I work in three elementary schools as a math specialist.
Yes.
And I want to say that I, I really think a lot of thought went into this plan and I can, and I can see that. And I would really like to see the middle school and the high school get a behaviorist. I think that would be really helpful. I would really actually like to see Center Pepin get a vice principal. I would like, like everyone else, to see the adjustment counselors kept and when we ever have a gravy year, even increased because I think that direct service with children is so impossible, is so important. As a math person, I kept trying to put these FTEs together and I noticed, I just wanted to point out, that the plan goes from three behavior teachers to two behavior teachers. So, that's maybe one position that could be put in the pot to save some of this plan. So, I guess what I would say is, is there some way the plan could go back to the drawing board and preserve the parts to fix what really needs bolstering up, to preserve those parts in our district that are working really well and come back with another plan. That's, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Gina.
Hi. I'm Mayne Cody. I wasn't really planning to stand up here, I didn't. But I have a lot of thoughts about this, but not usually used to addressing it in such a manner in front of so many people. But I just want to say that I work in a local school district who went from having a school adjustment counselor to having a behaviorist or interventionist. And I have to say that we are now turning that person back into a school adjustment counselor because her role was similar to the one that you had described and laid out before, before us tonight, where she had to take on the role of doing the FBAs and being in charge of the ABA stuff. And that took up all of her time. And I work in a school that is pre-K through one, so we have one school adjustment counselor there. And that was only, you know, that's a smaller, that's a smaller group and we only had, we have a full-time person to fill that role. And even with that full-time person, that took up all of her time and it's led her role to be less proactive in her approach and more reactive. And therefore, we weren't able to really provide the students with the things they needed on a daily basis that have been described tonight. It was more that we were able to sort of do crisis management, sort of, you know, triage, should you say, like running around, sort of like, you know, trying to pick up the pieces all the time. And her services weren't available to the kids who need them the most on a very daily basis for things that just kind of popped up like they were describing. So, I think, you know, it would, you know, behoove the, this school system to keep that role within our schools. I think it's a really important role. I too, along with everyone else, a lot of other people here, you know, have thought about the idea of school choice in my child and I think it's something that's on the mind of a lot of parents, educated parents, whatever, that think about the idea that they have the choice to go somewhere else. So, I think it's really important that as a school district, we think about that because I think parents are more educated and are paying more, paying closer attention to what's going on. And I know that in the school district that I work in, that the mental health has been off the charts. The amount of kids that are coming in who need these services has been really, I mean, alarming, even more so than the kids who are on the spectrum these days. We've been seeing so many kids who need mental health support. So, I think to take that away is just the wrong thing to do. And with the bullying and everything that's going on as well, the fact that we have to be so proactive about our approach to bullying with the second step and everything else, who's going to do that? I just don't see it happening if we don't keep those roles in place, especially actually, I'm a Maple School parent, but especially at Center Pepin, where you're asking the assistant principal to do that. I mean, you're talking about not having people doing things out of the scope of their practice. Talk about being out of the scope of their practice. I mean, what sorts of experiences does an assistant principal have for, you know, servicing these kids who have, you know, who need mental health care? I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I think that everyone has spoken, it appears. No last minute? All right. I know that there were at least one question that I got down that came from our speakers and please help me, you might have gotten more questions. And I believe also there are a couple of questions here.
I think Ann's got a number of things, but let's get the questions.
All right, I think we should get the questions. One of the questions that I heard present- Oh, yes, Deb.
Well, that's okay, you can-
Okay, then we'll get to Deb's. All right. One of the questions I heard presented by, excuse me, I may not have the exact name. I, I don't remember the name. But one of the questions that I heard presented was, "What is the training of the interventionist?" So, Ann-
I sort of answered that, but I just didn't know if they had like, did they have mental health training or are they, they triple-edged training or do they-
They have special education training with a concentration in-
Ann, Ann, you have to go to the mic.
I'm so sorry. They have special education training with a concentration in students with social, emotional, and behavior disabilities. We have school psychologists who are master's level people who have the social, emotional training. There was just one thing that I, I've wanted to address that I heard come up a number of times and that was the role of the social worker in providing second step. I'm a second step trainer and part of my training as a trainer, it was made very clear that the second step should be part of the regular classroom curriculum and should be being presented by teachers. And that was provided to me as a trainer for second step. So, I just wanted to add that little piece in, right?
Right, thank you.
Hold on, don't go away.
I'm not going anywhere.
All right. Deb, did you have a particular question?
Yeah, after you finished your presentation, I was curious to know, and I'm still interested to know, what percentage of the psychologist's time do you feel would be devoted to evaluation versus counseling?
That's a very difficult thing to really parse out because I really don't think of it that way. And it may be something that I need to go back and look at in a different way. I look at it more that right now, we are providing all of the evaluations in the district with one psychologist and support from an hourly person that is being brought in to do those evaluations that are above what that single psychologist can handle. So, that if we're really looking at it, that would leave a large part of two full-time people's positions. I would say approximately 40%. And that's just off the top of my head, if not more. I would really have to look at it, Deb. I'm not, I'm not, I'm going to be honest and say, I haven't looked at it that way. I've just looked at it from the amount of service hours provided by the school adjustment counselors and looked at it in that way. But that's a good point and something that we probably do need to have a former answer for.
And the other, just the other piece to follow up on that same thought is, it seems like the message that we're hearing so much is the value of the direct service with the children, direct service to the children. And just wondering, it, it's kind of just a broader question of how much direct service with children would you feel would be provided with the new model versus?
Again, and I think Nancy said it very clearly, we would not be providing any less direct service to children than we are now. What would be the benefit of being able to put stopgap measures from an expert working with classroom teachers would be that the services that were provided on a direct basis were being provided for those students who even had more needs while stopgapping children from getting to that level. So, it would be a two-tier approach.
Laura?
I just, I want to rewind this to the beginning of, of this whole introduction just to clarify a point. I think that you both spoke about Nancy approaching you. I know that you are relatively new to this position. I want to thank you because I, I appreciate your personality and your expertise and your manner, maybe above what I've dealt with in the past in positions similar to this. So, I first want to thank you for that. And secondly, just to- And secondly, just to clarify that it was Nancy and you having a conversation saying that we clearly have serious flaws specific to the special education services that our children are receiving, especially at the elementary and preschool levels. And that was what caused you to go back?
No. And thank you for asking that question, because it does clarify it.
I think that's a piece of it, but I'm going to let you.
A piece of it. It does give me an opportunity to clarify it. One of the things that became clear to me is, one, and again, I need to go back to the fact that this district is spending an incredible amount of money for services being provided with very little support to children by consultants who we really have no direct supervisory abilities with. That was the first red flag for me. The second red flag is that as I went from program to program and school to school, I was seeing differences in service delivery and even program philosophy from building to building and level to level. And that when, especially when you're dealing with children who may or may not be diagnosed as having special needs, that have challenges around both curriculum and behavior, there is a need for vertical and horizontal alignment. So those were really the driving forces that started us looking at a way to build that common understanding of service and that vertical alignment of services. And at this point, what's happening is that a lot of that is falling directly to me. And as much as I enjoy that work, I cannot be the strong presence that teachers need on a daily basis and still do the rest of my job to keep the district in compliance.
Does that help you?
Yeah, at some point, I would like to comment on it, and I don't know the level of appropriateness of that, but you can tell me when you want to.
Well, I think the, I'll answer that before.
I did want to say something.
But when we get to a motion, then we can discuss.
Thanks, Nancy.
Anybody have anything else?
Can I?
Anne, actually, let's, I think we're finished with the questions or did?
I know, I have somebody up there.
Let me, you have a question for Anne?
I have one question for Anne, which is, have you also calculated in the time that needs to be spent at the BST table at all three elementary schools when making that 40% number? Because by my calculations, it's a full day of that person in a meeting, either at Center or at Pepin or at Maple. Added up, that makes a BST for three schools.
Yeah, and again, I have worked, I have implemented the BST process. And that's a surprising statement to me, because I've never had, heard of a BST process not being able to be completed within a very, within an hour, an hour and a half. In most districts, BST is in fact, an after-school stipended position.
I have, it's an hour and a half, but an hour and a half times three schools turns into a full school with lunch.
I hear what you're saying.
So that's, that's...
Yeah.
So I just wanted to thank you all again for being here and for sharing your thoughts. Wendy, I think, you know, what you said certainly hits home for all of us, that there are hard decisions that have to be made now. We don't have the funds to do everything that we want to do or that we need to do. If we did, we certainly wouldn't be considering eliminating some positions that clearly have great value for a number of you. But as Anne has said, I asked her to do an evaluation in the district. Before that, you know, I've received emails and had conversations with parents. I've had the same with teachers, some of you sitting in this room, with administrators, and certainly at our leadership team. And from my own experiences in our district as a teacher, and after that, you know, in administration, what's come back to me time and time again, from you as teachers and from the parents, is that we do not have enough support in our district for all the needs that we're facing. We can't do this alone. We aren't able to manage all of the issues that we have in our district. And I know that for a fact. And the evidence that we have shows us that. And the data that Anne collected shows us that. So we have to do something. And you all know that we are continuing to have children come into our district with social, emotional, behavioral needs. And that will continue as well. The model that we've developed after long thought and careful deliberation and clearly I asked Anne every single question that you asked here this evening. And we asked all of these questions, that leadership team. And the answer was that we have to do something different. And that this model, the reallocation of resources, and by the way, we did consider every possible resource that was available to us. We are still having to make cuts in our district this year. You know the override didn't pass. You know, we don't have enough funding to do everything we want to do. And the only way we're able to do this model is to reallocate resources, the current resources that we have. We cannot add on any money. In fact, we're still having to make cuts. We'll be making 2.5 position cuts at the high school this year, along with a number of other smaller cuts, which have been detailed in budget books and are available to you. So again, hard decisions. You know, I know we have a gifted young teacher, Jera, who's come to us at Maple School. If I could keep her here, if I could keep Linda here, I absolutely would. Now, if more funding were to come to the district, that might be a possibility. You know that there are funds out in the state now that are supposedly, the revenues are higher in the state, there's little rumors about more money coming to cities. You know, we certainly could always all be hopeful that more money would come to our school department. But there are no guarantees of that, and we have to build our budget now, and we have to meet our needs now. The assistant principal at Center Pepin, you know, I have to say, I was surprised that Rob would say that he did very little discipline, because certainly that's not what we hear, you know, at our meetings. You know, and that's not just Rob's building, it's everywhere. It's everywhere. All of our administrators, all of our teachers are really stretched to the limit. And I feel that it is my responsibility to do something about that. Anne's plan, after careful thought, careful investigation, many questions, seems to provide comprehensive support for all students. I'm talking about all students in our district, special ed, general education students at the elementary, middle, and high school. Not as much at the middle and high school, because we simply didn't have the funds to stretch it that far. But for all students, our research shows us that this will provide more support and support with highly-trained individuals collaborating together on a comprehensive model. And I continue to say comprehensive, because as soon as we pull one piece out of this model that we're presenting to you here tonight, the whole model falls apart. And so we aren't going to be able to do any of this, because it's all built on reallocation of resources. We have limited resources, and all we can do is move them around to create this model. So again, you know, there was a lot of evidence collected, a lot of conversations, a lot of questions. I would not put this forward to the school committee, and I wouldn't suggest it, you know, to you in the district, if I didn't believe it was going to make things better for our children and for our parents and for our teachers. And so that's why I've put it forth. I trust Anne and her expertise and the model that she's developed for us, and we've certainly vetted it in leadership team, and I've certainly vetted it with her in examining every possibility that I could in coming to this decision. So I want to let you know that. I know that change is hard. I know that none of us likes to see change, and if we feel like something's going well, it's really hard to see that, to see that change. But I believe that the new model will provide as much, I believe it'll provide better services. I wouldn't be proposing if it, if it didn't. And if we should find that there are needs that aren't being met, then we'll figure out what we're going to do at that point in time. But I don't anticipate that that's going to happen. I think we have looked at this and researched it carefully enough that we're really firmly convinced that this model will provide a broader scope of services to all students in our district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the chair has entertained Superintendent's presentation and has listened to the people that came forward tonight to speak. So it is now our chance and opportunity to discuss this issue. Do I hear a motion from the committee?
Can I take, can we take a sidestep here for a second?
Certainly.
As far as the budget's concerned, at some point, I believe we always get the figure from the mayor, we get the final budget, and then there's that final cut list. And we approve that. I imagine that this is all going to be a part of that. And do you know when that's going to happen?
Andy, do you want to speak to the budget process?
The mayor has presented his figure and has provided us with a number that was, and it's been reported in the papers, it was $300 and some odd thousand dollars above our FY13 figure, but still resulting in the need for the district to cut about $200,000, because our level of service was just about $600 grand increase. And with some of the changes that we've made already, some funding sources were down to needing to still cut close to 200 grand. So we're going to the city council finance subcommittee next Wednesday, Tuesday, Tuesday as well, to discuss our budget with them.
So when you anticipate the school committee getting that package and making that final vote on the next year's school budget?
I would defer, I mean, if, once we finalize reductions, we could end up having that, you know, next meeting. Or, I mean, the process also has been kind of, we would go to the finance subcommittee and talk about it, and then bring it to the full committee, if we want to do that approach, you know, and then...
Would it put off any kind of planning and decision-making if we put this vote off until the same night we do the budget vote?
Well, we're already having to make cuts. So what we've done to put this model into place is simply to shift funds from one place to another. So we still have that same cut list that we have to make.
Okay.
So there isn't, there doesn't seem to be any hope on the horizon that going to the finance subcommittee will get us more money? That's not possible.
No, that's not why I'm asking. I'm just asking because it sounds like, you know, we're, this is all sort of part of the whole budget package also, and it's also going to be part of the budget, the cut list that we normally get every year.
Well, it's not really part of the cut list, because we've already made those cuts. So what we're doing is we're simply shifting, what we're asking you for are two new positions, well, two positions, but two of the interventionist positions, one assistant principal. So in order to do that, we're having to eliminate two school adjustment counselors and use the funds from contracted services that we're saving by putting this model into place, around $150,000. And also, we have a behavior teacher position at Center Pepin School. So we've calculated all of that into, you know, making this proposal. But in addition to that, so, we're doing that in order to put this model forward. But in addition to that, we're probably going to have to make another $200,000 of cuts. And so from that list that we gave you originally, I think it was 280?
Three, just over three, 300 and change, I think.
Right. But we made a, the leadership team had put forth a cut list in our budget book of 280 something, I think it was. So now we're down to having to make 180, about $100,000 less in cuts. But, so we're going to take from that list and eliminate some things, which we haven't determined at this time in the leadership team. So that would be some of those very same things that were on that cut list, that were in the budget book. So probably would be, you know, supplies, and there were some summer work hours, I think, those kinds of things that were on the budget list.
So to be, to be clear, Andy, we had our proposed budget that we approved. How, what was the difference between that approved proposed budget and what the mayor agreed to fund?
I have it here.
About $300,000.
$300,000.
$300,000.
Just to be, $300,000.
Thank you.
Yeah, because level service was 600 and change, and he gave us 300 more than FY13's budget.
So we still had about a $300,000 gap.
Correct.
The chair entertains a motion from the committee.
I guess I just have one other question, following up on Ladonna's comment. I'm wondering if what your line of thinking, Ladonna, was, if there's any opportunity to put the school adjustment counselor cuts into the pie of final cuts and look at the prioritization of final cuts?
Um, well, not exactly. I guess I just saw this as part of the overall budget package, in addition just to being a whole new model. And it's not that I don't, you know, I'm not in support of the model, I'm just thinking of the whole budget package and what we're going to be eventually approving, especially when you're adding an assistant principal to the whole budget.
But it doesn't really work that way. So let's pretend that we had passed the budget, we'd given our list of cuts, and it had all been taken care of. So we cut from that list that we gave you in our budget book. Let's say that's all been done. Now, and it wouldn't happen this way, because it shouldn't happen this way, this close to the beginning of another school year. But let's say that we had identified suddenly that we've got all of these needs in our district, and we are not able to meet those needs with the current staff that we have. So we're saying, well, the only way now we can meet these needs is we're going to have to eliminate something that we already have in order to put something else in place. You see? So that's kind of what we're doing at the same period in time. We're requesting that we reallocate the resources that we have that are aside from our budget cuts.
Okay.
To enable us to do this new model, which we believe is in the best interest of all students in our district.
All right, and let me just explain just sort of a rule of order. We cannot really, as a committee, discuss the proposal that has been brought before us by Superintendent Follinsby until we have a motion on the table.
So I make a motion that we move forward with this model that has been presented to us with the addition of the new positions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Now, is there any discussion on this motion?
I think I want to make, I think there's some confusion about that interventionist position. It's, when you just look at Maple School alone, you're taking away the school adjustment counselor, adding the interventionist, because they're both .7 FTE. But really, it's the .7 FTE interventionist at Maple with the .3 interventionist at Center Pepin, that's one person. So that making that, it's not just so easy as making the switch from one .7 school adjustment counselor to a .7 interventionist, correct?
But it's also that we've added a .5 to our school psychologist.
Right.
So that we have two full-time positions now, instead of a 1.5 position.
And just for the sake of parents, can you, can you... And just for the sake of parents, can you, can you explain to the parents and the kids that love Jara so much? And I haven't ever met her, but when they, when they talk about getting to talk to Jara, how, how is that going to change for them? I'm sure they're going to get another wonderful person to talk to. So can you just explain that process for the students?
Certainly, so again, it's hard when you're thinking of people. You know, when you make these very hard decisions, you have to think about positions, not people, and how those positions are going to service our children. So, you know, we have every expectation that we would hire somebody who would meet the needs of our students in the same way that our current staff meets the needs of our students. They aren't the same staff, but they, aside from, in addition to, those kinds of services, somebody for the kids to talk to when they're having those, those needs, whether it's a divorce or a death in the family. You know, we've used our guide, our school psychologist in that way before. In fact, some of the teachers I was talking to said, oh, yes, we always used our school psychologist to talk to or to have our kids talk to. I know that we did that when I was a teacher in school. So it's about finding that person who has those skills to meet the needs of our children in those kinds of ways. So it would be just like, you know, there are no guarantees in, in a school district that the people that we have and love, that our teachers who are sitting out there in the audience right now are going to be with us next year. That's happened to us time and time again. Not necessarily because of decisions we've made, but people get married, they move away, they decide they're going to have a baby. You know, we've lost wonderful staff members throughout the years for a variety of reasons. And we grieve every, you know, excellent staff member that we lose. And it's not something that any of us ever want to do. But when that happens, we ensure that we hire somebody of equal caliber to replace that person. Because we have an expectation that we're going to hire the best people, have the best people in our district. And, and that's how we replace those people who mean so much to us. We've had classroom teachers, and I know those of you at Maple know them well, that we've had to cut in the past through budget cuts or through their own decisions to move out of our district. And it's painful, it's very painful. But then we go back and we try to make, do the very best we can to hire the very best people to replace them and to go on and provide that high quality of education and those nurturing support services for our students. You know, I believe that this model provides more comprehensive and extensive support student services for our students. And I believe that whomever we hire to replace people that we have to lose, you know, will do that same kind of job that the people at Maple have done for us all along and the, the teachers and staff that, that our parents clearly respect so highly and, and love. That's what we try to do in East Hampton. Provide the highest quality staff possible, that's what we have.
Okay.
And I think, does that answer your question?
Any other comments? Laura? I know you said you wanted to...
I just, you know, we've, we've all talked about this at length. I want to say first that I, I'm very glad to have Ann Knapp here. I'm very glad to have Nancy Follinsby here. And I think that this was an incredibly thoughtful proposal. And I think that an enormous issue with our schools, especially at the elementary level, was a, you know, a very flawed special education program that doesn't just affect special ed students and their families, but affects the quality of education for all the parents because it distracts from learning in the classroom. So I want to say that I appreciate the proposal in the context of going 99% of the way to repairing the special ed program. That being said, I'm, I'm desperately hoping that we can find a way to preserve two positions that I had a gut feeling were crucially important. And, and I, I think that was really solidified by the, the testimony that we heard tonight. I, I don't know that, as, as much as I desperately want to repair the special ed program to benefit all the students, I, I don't know how I feel about doing that at the cost of, of those positions. That's, and I don't know how to proceed from that. And I think it was an, it is a fantastic proposal and I wish that we didn't have to lose those positions to do that. And I, and I feel that that's the impasse that I think a lot of folks are, are at right now.
And, and I'll just echo that. This was not an easy decision for me to make. It was not an easy decision for the leadership team to make, not in any way. But again, we cannot move forward and we cannot do this comprehensive approach to meeting the needs of our students without making the cuts that are on, are in this proposal at this point in time. As I said, some more money comes our way, you know, this would look different. But, but that's where we are at this point. So it's, it's an either or really at this point in time.
Oh Nancy, just a point of information for those who are still listening at home. I think everyone here knows the answer to this question, but we've used this term so much tonight. I imagine that there are a number at home. Who is on the leadership team?
I apologize.
No, no, there's no reason, everyone knows who you're talking about. But I think many people at home do not know that this is not just a decision that you have made.
Right.
That this is a decision, you have clearly said it was vented and approved by your leadership team. So who are those people?
By the team as a whole, yes. They are our building administrators, our special ed director, our curriculum director, and our technology director. So it would be building principals and assistant principals, special ed director, curriculum director, and technology director.
Okay, good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Not during, not at this point, thank you though. Any other comments? Any other questions? Debbie, you're looking like you have one.
Well, nothing. I, I guess I just, I think we all feel what you have all shared with us and expressed to us, we, we understand and we feel that pain. And we would certainly want to be making decisions that would keep the school adjustment counselors. But I, it's, so it's hard, it's hard to be in this position. But I, I do think too, we have to make decisions that are in the best interest of the, all the schools and the district as a whole. And things like this can be hard and painful. And, and I, I guess I can hope that the direct service to children would be the same or better under the new model, that we could hope that that would be the case. And it's awfully painful. I don't even know the school adjustment counselor at Maple, but I, I feel tremendous pain at the thought of losing her from all that you've said and Linda Aviard. And anyway, I just want to acknowledge, I just want to acknowledge your being here and you taking the time and energy to share all that you have. It's, it's very meaningful, it's very helpful. And that we, we do care and we are concerned. And yet, we need to make decisions that are hard and we need to make decisions that are hopefully going to move us forward as a district and hopefully we'll figure out the way to make it as best it can be and better than it ever has been, you know, from this point forward, one way or another.
I want to, as Chair of the School Committee, and I did not introduce myself to you after I insisted that each one of you give your name. My name is Nancy Sykes. I am a teacher of 50 years. And if, the gray hair is real. And if I was a teacher at Maple School, I would be sitting out there with you. And I would be standing up with you. And I would be applauding those of you who spoke. I am not a teacher at Maple School. I'm an elected member of the East Hampton School Committee. And I have a charge. And that charge is that I listen to every possible piece of data that is presented to me, that I ask questions, that I dig deeper than I oftentimes wish to do. Because I many times would rather vote with my gut. That is not what I am charged to do. That is actually unethical according to the rules that I am asked to pledge to when I accept a position on the school committee. I also have been charged, when I first became a member of the school committee, to find a new school superintendent that would meet the many, many needs of this community. And I feel very proud that this school committee did just that when they found Nancy Follinsby. And so part of what I do, when I am charged to make a decision, is I trust the people that we have chosen that have the expertise in the fields, that they live in. It's very, very, very hard for me to cast my vote tonight, and yet it isn't. Because I really believe that the best proposal has been presented. I know it is not what you want me to say. And I know it is not the vote you want me to cast. But I do feel that it is the right vote for me tonight. I feel it is the right vote for East Hampton schools. I trust Nancy and I trust that leadership team. Your principal is one of them, a strong member of that team. I trust that team. I will be voting yes tonight on this motion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion that is before the table, that we accept the proposal of hiring new, two new positions for East Hampton, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
There is one no. All, any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, we have more business. Yes. Nancy, you're still on.
I am. Shall we go back to a Grindspoon Awards update?
Yes.
So I just wanted to say that we did have a celebration of our Grindspoon Award winners. We have three wonderful teachers in our district who received the award. Rose Guera at the high school, Anne Marcia Messer at the middle school, and Carrie Dunlap at the elementary school. We're very proud of them. They had a wonderful dinner at the log cabin and received many lovely gifts. And we just were so proud of them and, and what they've done for our schools. And, and we're delighted that the Grindspoon Foundation, along with a number of other contributors, helps us to honor our teachers.
All right, it's great, congratulations, Stacey.
The next on my report is the CPA list of priorities. You, as a school committee, asked me to go back to my leadership team and talk with them about the priorities that we wanted to put forth as a school department to the Preservation Act. And so we talked, we had a good, long talk about it. And it was a consensus of the leadership team that we should put forth the football field at Whitebrook Middle School as our first project because we felt that it would benefit the greatest number of students in our district, both the Whitebrook students and the, and the East Hampton High School students as well as students across the district to use those fields for recreational activities. And then, in addition to that, we put additional projects that would, we would like to have, see happen at each school. Principals met with their school councils and came up with these lists by working with their school councils. So we'd like to submit this, you know, with your approval to the CPA as our school department listed priorities.
Can I just ask, under the Maple School, the first to resurface the hardtop play area or install field turf play area in place of current hardtop? Is that a one or the other, or is it? Mr. Lewis, would you like to speak?
One or the other.
Got it, thank you, that makes sense.
Different cost factors there.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Just curious, which is more expensive?
Field turf.
Field turf. Any other questions on these?
Do I hear a motion to accept this?
Can I, just last mini question. Are they going to interpret this as priority, given this, this? Our community just communicate that this isn't necessarily priority to hear? Or are they likely to only fund the football field this year anyway?
Oh Lord, we'll be lucky if we get...
Yeah.
A goalpost.
But it'll be continuous in future years.
That's right. What they wanted was our priority project, so we've identified that. And then they also said that they wanted other projects that we'd like them to consider.
So maybe something will jump out at them.
And it's conceivable that they could ju, jump to the bottom.
Yeah, okay. It's clearly the in descending order of schools.
Except, you know, what I, my understanding is that they will look at our priority project for their grant, this grant that they're doing right now.
Right, yeah.
And then in future years, they would look at our other projects and they'd probably come back to us and say, so now of these projects, which would be your, but they wanted to kind of have an idea of, of the things that we were interested in.
But if they, if they couldn't afford the priority this year, then they might go to something that's a little less costly.
Right.
A smaller project.
Right, maybe something else would jump out.
I think what they would do, you know, it's a good question. But my understanding was that they would give us X amount of money towards our priority project. And the Friends of Football are also wanting to raise money. But they, they approached the CPA initially asking for some of their grant funds. I think they have $800,000 worth of grant funds and they're going to distribute them to a number of different projects, but they would distribute our portion to our priority project, as I understand it. And then it would be up to the Friends of Football to try to raise the remainder. Any other questions on that?
Motion?
Motion to approve the list of school priorities for the CPA.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the priorities go.
Okay, the Parsons School, we've delayed, we've wanted to postpone that discussion because the mayor is not here and he's the one who requested that we bring that up for discussion. The naming committee report, Deb Luznia.
The naming committee met last month to review and discuss the topic of naming portions of the new East Hampton High School in honor of or in memory of specific individuals. We have received many requests to name particular rooms at the high school after former teachers. And it's wonderful that people feel so passionate about the remarkable teachers that we've, that they've had while being students at East Hampton High and that these teachers had such a positive impact on their lives. But there are also current EHS students that feel the same way about teachers that they have that they will surely remember throughout their, throughout their lives and be, they'll be remembered throughout East Hampton's history as well as, as making a tremendous difference in their students' lives. So we recognize that there'll be many outstanding teachers in the future as well. So naming rooms at the high school in memory of teachers in the past or honoring teachers from the past is, you know, it's meaningful to people of that era, but not necessarily everyone else in the community. And we're feeling like, since this is a high school for the entire community of East Hampton and is paid for by all of the citizens of East Hampton, we feel it wouldn't be appropriate to name portions of the building in honor of specific individuals who are employed by the school at one time, whether that be from the past, the present, or the future. So we would however, be willing to look into the possibility of offering people the opportunity to purchase a bench for the school or a picnic table for the school. or a picnic table for the school, and have a plaque placed on it in memory or honor of a former teacher or someone else who's been very meaningful to our school system. And that we could look into that in the future, to have a way of honoring people and having a permanent piece of furniture or what have you at the school. But that we wouldn't pursue naming rooms at the high school.
Okay. Thank you. Do I understand, then, Debbie, from that report, that the committee will continue on to make some kind of, make other decisions as far as what might be possible for, or is that going to be at a, a later assignment?
I guess we were thinking on an as-needed basis that we would pursue that if, if people were interested and wanted to investigate what options might exist for park benches, for benches on the grounds, or picnic tables, or what have you. We would, we would reconvene and investigate that and provide the appropriate information. But I guess we were gonna let it be at this point, unless that need arises or interest surfaces.
Yeah. And I think need is a piece of it. So, in, in, as the landscaping is completed for the high school, you know, we might determine that it would be nice to have benches in certain places, and that might be an opportunity for people to, you know, choose to honor someone.
All right. We do have a nice patio for, off of the Caffet Commons, which doesn't have seating currently, so that could be one need that could be filled.
That'd be a great, great opportunity for that.
Samantha? Thank you.
Uh, school committee stipend. Mr. Paquette.
Oh, I wondered why you were here, Andy.
Thank you.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Tried to get a...
I'll be brief on this. The stipends that were paid to the school committee for who-knows-how-long were always done as a, as a contract or payment through accounts payable. You're technically supposed to be salaried. And that is not a, so, we need to get you on the payroll, is what this is. The city auditor has informed us that compensation for elected officials is considered wages by the IRS. We have confirmed that. So, we are going to end up having to enroll all of you onto the payroll, so that instead of getting a check through accounts payable, we'll process your pay as an employee of the district. So, what we can do is either you can stop by, and we can, or I was actually thinking, next school committee meeting, I'll put a packet together for all of you to have and fill it out with all the necessary paperwork that you need.
All right. That's so interesting, because I actually thought our town charter read just the opposite, that we could not be salaried.
What our understanding was as well, and I think the understanding of prior administration as well. But the city auditor got IRS ruling that compensation. And I checked with our internal expert as well, and he said, "Technically, yes."
What else in that charter is wrong?
I'm not a charter...
Another, another night.
So, yeah, so what I'll do is, at the next school committee meeting, I'll have packets together for all of you to take, fill out, and return back for payroll.
Gee, we're practically the end of our term.
Does that mean we are now all make below minimum wage? I'm just kidding.
We can start lobbying for health benefits. Thank you, Andy. I'm sorry. We're just a little giddy at this point, you know.
No problem.
We're desperate for, for, uh, release.
All right.
Thank you, dear.
Yep.
Thank you, Andy.
All right. I believe that Nancy, do you have any more?
No. The end of my report.
Then, let's go to...
Laddana. Let's, motion to approve the school, excuse me, the school, the minutes of the school committee meeting of April 9th, 2013.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay. Approved.
Okay. So, warrants and payroll, we have several here. So, move to approve the school payroll dated April 18th, 2013, in the amount of $512,435.55.
Second. There is a motion before you to approve the payroll dated April 18th, 2013, in the amount of $520,435.55. It was seconded, wasn't it?
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm, I, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated April 18th, 2013, in the amount of $336,945.87.
Second. All those in favor of the motion before you and to approve the accounts payable dated April 18th, 2013, in the amount of $336,945.87?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Again, disapproved?
Nay.
No nays. Approved.
Okay. Move to approve the school payroll dated May 2nd, 2013, in the amount of $485,935.95.
Second. There's a motion before you to approve the payroll dated May 2nd, in the amount, 2013, in the amount of $485,935.95. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated May 2nd, 2013, in the amount of $127,760.42.
Second. There's a motion to approve the authorization payment of May 2nd, 2013, in the amount of $127,760.42. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. It is approved.
Move to approve the school payroll dated May 16th, 2013, in the amount of $584,090.3. Did I say that right?
Second.
Can you repeat the amount?
And it was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is approved.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated May 16th, 2013, in the amount of $153,929.61.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is approved for May 16th, 2013, in the amount of $153,929.61.
That's it?
That's it.
For payrolls.
For payroll.
Warrant some payrolls.
Um, school choice district. I thought we already voted that.
We did.
I thought we did, too. Not supposed to be there, right?
Yeah, I think we did vote the school choice district.
And we did, uh, school choice openings for 2013.
So, are you looking for a motion?
Uh, yes, I am looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the school choice openings for school year 2013 to 2014 as presented.
Second. All right. All those in favor of the school choice openings presented for the year 2013, 2014, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. They are approved.
So, motion to approve these two school of choice slots for this current school year in grade 2 at Center Peppin.
Second. All those in favor of the request to open two school choice slots for grade 2 at Center Peppin?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. It is approved. And we have a field trip to Mystic Aquarium.
Motion to approve the June 14th?
June 4.
There, there's actually two now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
We have new, we'll just, we'll do them together. Motion to approve the school trips to Mystic Aquarium on June 4th and June 14th for Whitebrook Middle School.
Second. All those in favor of Mystic Aquarium? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is passed. The field trips are passed. I believe that we get one more motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.